Good morning. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our City Council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. I'd also like to let you know that we're not able to do a live feed this morning. Our camera that's mounted on the back of the wall is not working. Our friend Garrett has a camera on a tripod right behind you there, so it will be available just as soon as possible after the council meeting is over to be put on our social media platforms. So this meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson is absent today. Councilwoman Manatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's compose our heart with prayer. Father in Jesus' name, we come to you the humblest way we know how. All we come about here is in humbled hearts, thanking you for another day, thanking you for another day of government. Again, God, we come as Solomon came to you. When you asked Solomon, what can I do for you? And Solomon responded, "I'm a child, and your people are great. I can't lead them, I can't serve them, I can't govern them without your help, without your assistance." We realize today, God, this administration, we can't lead, we can't govern, we can't serve without your divine leading, your divine guiding. So we thank you for our mayor, we thank you for the council, we thank you for every department head, we thank you for the great citizens of the City of Gaston. Now, we ask that you help us not to lean to our own understanding, but we look to you, the author and the finisher of our faith, that at the end of the day, we'll hear you say, "Well done," and we give you the praise, the glory and the honor for this meeting today. We ask it all in Jesus' name, and all that agrees, say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the regular and special City Council meetings held on September the 12th. And I need to add, and the Finance Committee meeting also held on September the 18th. So we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 8th through the 14th.
Sumo.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor Ford, I see you have some today.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask the club, the Women's Club, to please come to the front? Anyone that's a member of the Women's Club.
At the end.
It's a lot of women. It's a Women's Club. So Iva wrote this, and Iva, we want to thank you, is what I've been told, and I was going to get Iva to read it, but I'll give it a shot. Iva, if I need help, I'm gonna holler at you. So this is, "Whereas 100 years ago, a meeting was held on September 19th, 1923, in the home of Ms. Charlotte Cox, and she became the founder of the Women's Club, originally known as the Axis Club. And whereas from its beginning, the club pursued the objectives of being literary, scientific, and philanthropic for the advancement of womanhood, and to be ready at all times to take action on any progressive course vitally affecting the community. And whereas, members of the Women's Club launched a drive to encourage the City of Gaston to buy Nakalula Falls and the adjoining 169 acres of land, which later came to fruition. In 1968, 1969, the club sponsored a drive to raise funds to place a nine-foot bronze statue of Princess Nakalula at Nakalula Falls Park, which remains today. And whereas, at various times, the Women's Club planted dogwood trees, crepe myrtles, and maple trees at the sites selected by the City of Gaston. The most recent project was planting peach trees at the Dr. Clarence Underwood Park, located across the street from the Gaston Public Library. And whereas, many of the city's organizations and events had their beginnings as a result of the Women's Club Civic and Phila-- I can't say that word, Iva. That's it. Activities. The club still awarded a monetary Charlotte Christman Cox Scholarship to deserving female high school seniors each year. And whereas, throughout its history, the Women's Club has provided education and entertainment to the membership through a monthly meeting and luncheon. Many notable guest speakers have been invited to provide enlightenment of many topics, including local, national, international concerns. Perhaps the most popular speaker was Amelia Earhart, who spoke to the club in 1934 and again in 1936. And whereas, in 1954, the Women's Club purchased the beautiful colonial home of Colonel and Ms. O.R. Hood on Chestnut Street, and the members take great pride in decorating and maintaining the original beauty of the clubhouse and grounds, which can be enjoyed by the community through their rental program. The Women's Club of Gaston is listed in the National Registry of Historical Places and in the State of Alabama Register of Historical Landmarks. Now therefore, I correct forward, Mayor of the City of Gaston, Alabama, hereby join the City Council in proclaiming, September 19th, 2023, the Women's Club Day, in the City of Gaston extending appreciation and commendations for 100 years of dedicated service to the city and community." Mr. President, before I present this, Sunday, we had a great celebration, reception, and the President was there, Mr. Back, Mr. Moore, who else was there? Mr. Hooks.
Iva Nelson.
Ross Scott.
Rod.
And Iva.
Iva was there.
So.
Dixie Manatra.
Iva, you're not a member. They're accepting-- would y'all let Iva join? Okay? So, they need members, so. But I want to tell you, I started looking back 100 years ago. The first World War ended in 1918. So just think, about five years after that, this club formed. Think of all the community projects, all the hours they've put in, and everything they've done to help this community, and just for me being the mayor of Gaston, I know the importance of them. And our very own Councilwoman Dixie Manatra is the president of the Women's Club, and I want to thank them for everything that they do. So Dixie and Ms. Manatra, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I guess I could say, and I said it on Sunday, that the other milestone in that 1923 first time, first meeting, was also that the women had only been able to vote for a few years. So that sort of tells me how far we've come. So we appreciate the mayor and the staff, and we had a great time on Sunday celebrating 100 years, but it was also special that the actual first meeting was 100 years ago today. So thank you so much for this award, and we cherish it, and it will have a very special place in our clubhouse. Thank you.
[applause] Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna come way over here today. What a feast day out there.
Martha Elrodson. Martha Elrodson.
All right, everybody, look right here. Count three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Happy birthday, Mr. Ford. Happy birthday.
Okay. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you. While the ladies of the Women's Club are moving back to their seats, I'll share a personal moment. My mother, Henrietta Back, was the president of the Women's Club in 1991 and '92, so you ladies hold a special place in my heart also. Thank you for what you do.
So Mr. Speaker, geez, Mr. President. Boy, really going back in time in the legislature. We're just going to leave Mr. Speaker. My wife, today is a special day, it's her birthday. So I just wanted to recognize that, because now I don't have to buy her anything. But happy birthday, Gwen. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if you're gonna get off that easy. All right, thank you, Mayor Ford, and thank you, Women's Club of Gaston. We'll move to item 8, which is unfinished business. There is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 0-47-23 regarding managed care of dogs and cats. This ordinance was tabled for three weeks on August 29th. It requires owners to register and obtain licenses for dogs and cats over six months of age, establishes a permit for commercial breeders, and fines for owners of dogs or cats captured at large that are unlicensed or have expired licenses. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, we were given three weeks to do some additional research and discussions with various advocates of animals, and we believe that our three weeks will be up this Friday, the 22nd. We have a scheduled Public Safety Committee meeting for Tuesday afternoon at 3:00, one week from today. And we would like to table this ordinance for two more weeks, so that the Safety Committee can see the results of our work and any changes that we feel we need to be bringing to this particular ordinance. So we would like to table it and then put it back on the agenda on October the 3rd.
All right, so we have a motion to table this ordinance for two weeks. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Smith, second. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the ordinance for two weeks, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for two weeks.
All right, item 9, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing to accept oral and written input from the public concerning an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2024 budgets. This ordinance approves the following budgets. The general fund, $60,175,513. Special revenue funds, $8,442,287. Debt service funds, $6,750,331. Enterprise and internal service funds, $15,698,517. Capital projects fund, $9,200,000. And capital projects fund II, $8,500,000. How we're gonna conduct this is that if anyone in the public would like to make a comment, you can line up over here on the wall and approach the podium, and I'll call you up when that time is ready. And I would like for you to, if you would please, give us your name and your address, and we will allow for three minutes for each comment. And so is there anyone who would like to speak in regard to the budget? Yes, sir. The green light on?
Green light on now.
There we go, thank you.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Number one, I didn't have an opportunity to look at the budget until yesterday. So my question is, I didn't see where the budget for the American Rescue Plan funds was located in the budget. I'd like to know about that. And number two, I didn't have an opportunity to see on the undesignated fund balance, so I'd like to know about that. Those are my two questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the budget from the public? All right, seeing none. At this time, I would invite the administration, if they would care to make a comment at this time.
Mr. President, I'll address the ARP funds. I'll address, Brandon, you can address the undesignated funds. Our last balance, you know, the last time we tapped the undesignated funds, we got close to 20 with interest, we're back to 21, 22 million. So we'll have a true number the first week of October, is that correct, Brandon?
Correct. A true audited number after the auditors are done with their procedures, just that disclosure, which should be further into the year, but we should have a good idea.
Can you address the gentleman's comments about the ARP funds?
I can. So on the ARP, just in a nutshell, it's its own, you know, you don't have anything, that is its own money, that has been established, that was approved by the council, so it is a separate budget, we'll be working on that, and the only thing that would need to be addressed is if any amendment is needed due to any funds not being utilized at that point. So it is its own budget, it is its own separate budget that has been approved, so if we, when we get the numbers down for the end of the year, if something needs to be addressed or amended at that time, that will come before council. But those funds are dedicated to ARP, they're on, it's on batch of funds, money, and if we have an issue that needs to be amended or addressed, we will bring it to council at that time to do that for the ARP funds.
So, Mr. President, can I ask questions to Heath, our engineer, too?
Please, yes.
Okay, so it's my understanding that, for the people to know, that the ARP funds and the projects were designated by the previous mayor and previous council. When we took office, a lot of the funds were encumbered, and a lot of the engineering work had already taken place, almost 30% to 40% of the projects that were, they wanted to complete, had taken place. And have you discovered if some of the projects have gone over, so we may possibly not have enough ARP funds?
Yes, sir. As we dive into the details of the engineering design, several of the projects have exceeded their original budgeted cost. So we know we will finish those designs, then hopefully seek additional funding, whether that's in-house or additional federal funds, et cetera. But many of the primary projects in the initial ranking have exceeded their costs, just, and across the board, as we know, construction costs have increased, but yes, sir, that's true.
So the largest drainage project that we have, is it in Councilman Avery's district?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you met with him yesterday, right?
We actually had to reschedule for today.
Okay. And you have rerouted that plan multiple times, I know, because we've gone over it, and I just wanted you to go over it with him. But in particular, how much do you think that project has gone over cost from the initial estimate?
Well, right now, because we're having to shift gears, not just because of cost, but of, there's some engineering issues that we're having to overcome, we're still holding about the $5 million, four to $5 million range. Until we finish the modified designs, we won't know the updated cost, but I would still hold that number until we know for sure.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And just so everybody will know, I wanted to make sure, Brandon Phillips is our new Finance Director for the City of Gaston. We're very proud to have Brandon with us. He was serving in the Finance Department in the last administration, and is, along with Brett Johnson, has put together this budget and has worked tirelessly over the last, oh gosh, six months or so. So thank you, Brandon, for your work. I just want to make sure the public knows who you are. I think maybe most of them do, I just didn't want to have anybody asking, well, who was that fellow, so. All right. All right, so this ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to vote on the budget today, given the fact that the payroll that this budget contains has substantial increases to the city employees, and the timeliness of getting all of that information actually entered into the computer system in order for the employees to see those raises in their paychecks on October the 20th. I would like to give the HR Department more time to be able to get all of that information entered into the system.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to suspend the rules and to vote on the budget today. Is there a second?
A second, Mr. President.
Second from Councilman Smith. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstention. Abstain.
Okay. Not sure. I'm--
You're thinking?
Potentially, an abstention is not participating in the vote, so it did not receive a no, but yet at the same time, I did not receive unanimous consent, so I'm not real sure about the effect of that. Our city attorney is not here today, but I did not receive a dissenting vote.
But by rule, it has to be all majority vote.
The normal rule of procedure is that you read an ordinance one day and vote on it the following week.
Right.
So I'm not sure how an abstention affects unanimous consent. You don't have a no, but you don't have unanimous consent either.
Okay.
I can check. Okay, I think we might be getting an opinion on that, if we want to pause momentarily.
All right. If you'll bear with us as we find out exactly what we need to do here, and apologize for the delay, but we want to get it right, and we want to do it in the public, all above the table, so just bear with us, and--
This is a discussion, if I may.
Can we have a discussion after we have the vote? I mean, like that? I guess we can--
We don't have a motion for consideration yet.
Yeah, we don't have a voting for the consideration, so. In the sequence of things, there was a question, can we have a discussion, but in the sequence of Robert's Rules, you would have the vote, then you have a discussion, so we're not at that point yet, but we will reach that point. Pardon? Yeah, I think we're waiting on an answer. Going to get a book or something, or-- I guess Mr. Google is our friend, right?
I have my ALM book, but I didn't pull up that part online. I mean, the only thing that would trump it would be the strict no, because that would break it. That's right. It's here to stop any more. 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 It's here to stop any more.[1484.71]
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Robotics Incorporated. This is for data analysis and support for fiscal year 2024, citywide asphalt pavement assessment, and the amount is $34,900. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 comes under a first reading. This is an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 74, Article 3, regarding privileged license tax. This updates the schedule and cost of business licenses issued by the city. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 14 is new business. We have none. Item 15 is for department reports, committees, and boards. Item 16 is citizen request. Today, we have Joseph Cole coming. Mr. Cole is asked to speak on Water Works and Sewer Board Number 1, and then Number 2, assistance given.
Good morning, Mr. Cole. Is the green button on? Green light, I mean? I'm sorry.
It is now.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, the last council meeting I attended, I had asked you about a matter for a senior citizen problem, and you referred me to Ms. Moffett. And Ms. Moffett called individuals, and called them twice, and spoke with them, and they got the gentleman, they showed up the following day. So I'm here today to thank you and to really thank Ms. Moffett, because they really did a tremendous job. I know some storms happened in between that time, but they came out on a weekend, Saturday and Sunday, and they saw something that was missing. It was a, trying to think of what it is, a ramp, handicap ramp that they had. They put a new one there, and people are stopping by each day looking at that. So I want to especially thank you. Thank you for referring, and also to Ms. King. She introduced herself to me, said if I have any issues, I can talk to her. So I can say, the man at the end of the table knows how to pick a good staff, so I give him credit for that. The matter I want to speak on today, dealing with the water board, I'm going to be short. I won't say all the things I intended to say, but we have two members here that's on the board. That's the president and the gentleman from District 7. But I also wanted to let you know that you have a member on the board whose term expired in 2019. This individual has been on the board for four years. The individual was not reappointed and has garnered $4,800, because I think your stipend is $100 a month. So this person, I won't call the name, because I'm not trying to embarrass anyone, excuse me, but the person has been there four years, from 2019 to 2023, and has not been appointed. And what I make a request, since you all go to the meeting, that $4,800 that this person has received, that should pay it back, is that it goes for filtering 24 homes of citizens in Gadsden. That money can take care of that. The other matter I want to talk about, and this is, be real brief, on the matter dealing with the water board, I called to get information on how many actual customers that the water board has. A gentleman called me yesterday to inform me. There are 14,812 customers. That includes businesses. So if you remove the businesses out, he said it was approximately about 500 businesses. This board, you all received well over $100 million on this lawsuit. If you would take to put these water filters in all 412,000, whatever their mind, 14,812 customers, the cost of that would come to 2.9 million. So, since you got over $100 million, if you did this filtering of every customer that they have, it would only come to 2.9 million. It's supposed to take anywhere from 2 to 5, it is where from 2 to 5 million dollars. I'm trying to get the matter straight, because you can always check this out, but the point of the matter is, it's going to be less than $3 million. So if you have all homes, all customers' home has been filteredized, when they do build the osmosis plant two to five years from now, then everything has been set in place, and it won't be any worry about this pollution that have come out of the Coosa River. So to give you something to think about, 14,812 customers, and you do that by approximately $200, it's going to come to 2.9 million. So we got people that needs a system. They have the money. At least you all have the money. So if you have a meeting, at least bring it up to see if there's something feasible, because you are taking care of all of the customers that the water board has. It would take only 2.9 million. It's going to be less than that, because you don't do the business. So this is something that I just wanted to bring before the board, at least bring before you that you can take to the board. That's where all citizens will be taken care of. You don't have to worry about the council doing this or whatever. The money is there. So if you're going to get over $100 million, it looks, some of that money should be spent for the customer. So I thank you for allowing me this time to speak. I'm just going to leave this, leave this matter to... I spoke to a lady here that's very close to the mayor, and her birthday is today, and I told her my birthday is tomorrow, so he got good choices in some things. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Have a good day. Thank you, sir.
Could we clarify, just, Mr. Cole, just one thing, I just, I don't know if he's under the assumption, the, the water board received the money, it's not the city of this lawsuit settlement of 100 and some odd million dollars, correct?
Right.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
That the water board received the money, and they're a separate entity.
You made it clear to them, because I already know, but I know the two are on the water board.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I was just making it, because the, the water board is separate from the city.
Correct.
The council appoints the water board, and they received the lawsuit settlement from 3M, and they are in the process of building the reverse osmosis plant. I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Cole, can you reiterate that? I didn't understand what you meant. What, did you say we have a board member that doesn't come to meetings, that hasn't been there?
No, 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 no. You have a board member that comes to meetings.
Okay.
But was not reappointed in 2019.
Okay.
So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this person is sitting there for four years, and has not been appointed. Okay. So this is something that I just wanted to bring before the board, at least bring before you that you can take to the board. That's where all citizens will be taken care of. You don't have to worry about the council doing this or whatever. The money is there. So if you're going to get over $100 million, it looks, some of that money should be spent for the customer. So I thank you for allowing me this time to speak. I'm just going to leave this, leave this matter to... I spoke to a lady here that's very close to the mayor, and her birthday is today, and I told her my birthday is tomorrow, so he got good choices in some things. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Did y'all have a good day?
Have a good day. Thank you, sir.
Could we clarify, just, Mr. Cole, just one thing, I just, I don't know if he's under the assumption, the, the water board received the money, it's not the city of this lawsuit settlement of 100 and some odd million dollars, correct?
Right.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
That the water board received the money, and they're a separate entity.
You made it clear to them, because I already know, but I know the two are on the water board.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I was just making it, because the, the water board is separate from the city.
Correct.
The council appoints the water board, and they received the lawsuit settlement from 3M, and they are in the process of building the reverse osmosis plant. I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, Mr. Cole, can you reiterate that? I didn't understand what you meant. What, did you say we have a, a board member that doesn't come to meetings, that hasn't been there?
No, 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 no. You have a board member that comes to meetings.
Okay.
But was not reappointed in 2019.
Okay.
So this person is sitting there for four years and has not been appointed.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to get that clear.
Okay, okay. No problem.
All right, we have some special guests with us today. Thank you for your patience. We have some friends from Gadsden State Community College, and they've asked to speak today to have a special invitation to the, to the mayor and to the city council. So in order to do that, in keeping with council rules, we'll need to suspend the rules and to have a motion to allow them to speak. So is there a motion to allow our friends from Gadsden State to speak today?
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion? Motion in a second? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to allow the speakers, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
All right, thank you. Well, I'd like to bring up Dr. Tara Simmons from Gadsden State Community College, and also joining her at, at some point would be Alan Smith, the dean of workforce development. And I know I'm, I'm missing a few out there, and I apologize. There's my friend, Dr. Farah Hayes, and she's here. Y'all have made the effort to come here today. If any of y'all wish to speak after Dr. Simmons speaks, please make yourself available for the microphone. Dr. Simmons, thank you for being here, and welcome to city council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. President Murphy regrets that she wasn't able to attend today, but she wanted me to express our appreciation for your support of Gadsden State, and to also formally invite all of you and everyone here today. Our chancellor will be, ACCS chancellor, Jimmy Baker, will be speaking on Thursday at 10 o'clock at Gadsden State in Wallace Hall, and we'd love for you all to join as he gives state of ACCS. We have, our deans are present today, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Them having an opportunity to introduce themselves.
Please do.
We have Dean Wallace, who is our dean of IT. We have Dean McFry, our dean of finance. Dean Alan Smith, who's coming to speak, who's at workforce development. Dean Hayes with academics, and Dean Hayes. Also, Kelly, Kelly Pierce, I'm sorry, she was Hayes, Kelly Pierce, who is our dean of students. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. We appreciate you, and we look forward to seeing you on Thursday.
Thank you for the invitation, Dr. Simmons. Thank you.
I will be brief, but I just wanted to tell this council and mayor how much we appreciate your involvement with our Advanced Manufacturing and Workforce Development Center, and I want to tell you that it is well under construction. We're probably about halfway through the process. We've got 50,000 square feet with a roof and walls around. We're doing interior framing, and I know this administration has extended great support for this, and I just want to tell you how much we appreciate that, and the previous council also supported this. And I just wanted to share with you the updates that we have going with workforce development. Ms. Nelson, I always try to bring some folders, and I could give this to pass around, but we're doing things at Gadsden State. I want to just embrace the term community college rather than junior college, because we're doing things in adult education, and we're doing workforce training with non-credit opportunities now that are free to the citizens of the state of Alabama. We have many great things going on, whether you need a short-term certificate in food and beverage certification, or learn how to drive a skid steer, or bulldozer, or get an advanced degree in robotics. We've got a lot of great things going, got a lot of great programs, and I just want to share some good news with you that we have received with our, our building. We've got about a $30 million funding stream for that that we've got, and we've also just received news last week that we got a $1.6 million workforce development grant for equipment to go inside the building, so we're really excited about that. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Dean Smith. Thank you. That's, you know, what a great partnership the city of Gadsden has with Gadsden State Community College, and, you know, one of the most important things, I mean, there's so many important things, but workforce development. I know Mayor Ford is working with David Hooks and attracting jobs and industry to come to Gadsden. They want to know who is going to work in their plants, and Dean Smith, thank you for your leadership in that area, and of course, Finance Director, thank you. It's, it's changing the face of Gadsden and Etowah County in a very rapid way, and it's just, it's exciting to get to be a part of that with our, our good friends and partners at, at Gadsden State. Dr. Hayes, welcome.
I'll be very brief. Tina King called me out, so I blame her. Kelly Pierce and I are working with Tina and her and Nick Hall to create a professional development series for the city of Gadsden that will focus on middle management growth and how to be a leader, what leadership looks like, and also how to benefit your, your city, your employees, and the world around you. So we're very excited about starting that in October. It's going to be a great partnership. Thank you.
Exciting. Thank you. We look forward to that.
I also will be brief. I'm Kelly Pierce. I'm the dean of student services, but I wanted to let you guys know that this is the first time since 2018 that we have over 4,700 students. As of today, we have 4,733 students. This is a 10% increase over last year, and our goal is 4,500. So we're very happy to see that growth continue. We thank you to the city of Gadsden and others who are continuing to promote our programs. So thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on the increase. That's outstanding. Are there any others from Gadsden State that would wish to speak? Well, thank you for spending time with us this morning. Thank you for being here. We will go to the council, remarks by mayor and council, and start with Councilwoman Latham. If you would start us off, please, ma'am.
I just want to say this evening to remind not only District 1, but the city of Gadsden about the community meeting that is at the East Gadsden Community Center for the Grow Gadsden Comprehensive Plan, and that's at 5:00 PM. Want to remind us to please attend that meeting. Congratulations to the Women's Club on your 100th year celebration, and happy birthday to Mrs. Creep. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody, for being here once again, and we appreciate guests in state, all the good folks being here, all the deans being here, good friend Dean Smith. If you haven't been over there to do a walkthrough, to see what all they're offering, please, please, take advantage of the opportunity to go by there and get an understanding of what they're, what we're bringing to the city, because this is going to be something where other cities are going to be busing in here to take advantage of our advanced manufacturing company. I already told them, I'm ready to do a second walkthrough. I went over and spent the day with them, and I'm super excited about what's coming I went over and spent the day with them, and I'm super excited about what's coming to Gadsden. So thank you all. Thank you, Mayor Ford, and the council as well, and to the Women's Club. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery.
Mr. President, District 3 Community Meeting, Thursday, September 28, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at Handy Chapel AME Church at 901 Roger Street, Gadsden, Alabama. Also, just want to give a shout out to the celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month. I've apologized to the Women's Club for not attending the meeting or their celebration. So just happy birthday to that Women's Club organization for all they do, led by Councilwoman Monatra. I'm aware of there. They tend a few of our first Saturday events. And so very grateful, along with census tracts and things that we did also together. So appreciate that. Had another one here. Every Tuesday and Thursday...can't think of the event name now. CERT. Every Tuesday and Thursday, right now, until September 21, there's a CERT Community Emergency Response Team initiative that is held at Carver Community Center. This program, CERT, is a disaster medical training, fire safety training, search and rescue training, team organization, emergency preparedness, disaster psychology, and terrorism awareness. And so until September 21, this program will be going on on Tuesday and Thursday from 5:00 PM until 8:30 PM at Carver Community Center, 1030 Tuscaloosa Avenue. So please, ma'am, please, sir, church organizations, youth groups, and all those that can attend, please try to fit in a few days of...out of your month to attend this certification program. Really good program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilwoman Monatra.
We are missing our chair for this Public Safety Committee. That is Jason Wilson. And we are working very hard to make sure that we are looking at any and all of the...of the options and the additions and the changes that we can make to the ordinance that we put forth with dogs and cats. So just understand that we are trying to get as much information and do as good a job as possible so that we can do it correctly. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Monatra. Councilman Robinson.
I do not have anything to add, Mr. President. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Ford.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Latham mentioned the Grow meeting tonight at East Gadsden Community Center at 5:00 PM. We have also authorized daycare workers. So if you have children, please still attend. We have daycare workers. We have food, refreshments, and et cetera. Want to congratulate the Women's Club for 100 years. Also want to congratulate the Gadsden Lions Club. Today is their 93rd anniversary. So we failed to mention that earlier, so hopefully we'll honor them next meeting, Mr. President. We negotiated out a settlement with retired police and firefighters from a 2009 lawsuit. I want to thank the attorneys on both sides. We negotiated a lawsuit of $100,000 divided among the 30 remaining plaintiffs. So that was a victory for the city in itself and for the firefighters and policemen from the past. We also want to mention there is...there was an ordinance passed in January 15 of 2019. It was to charge $1,000 for landlord clearouts. So when you're cleaning out a house, if you're a rental house, and you own the rental house, and you clean it out and throw it on the curb, there is already an ordinance in place. It's Section 106-89 of the City Code. That's not something that the mayor in this administration and this council passed. It's the previous administration. So we have...we have...we have to enforce the ordinances that are in play. So I would ask at the council, if they want to change the ordinance, we'll work together on that to the Public Safety Committee. I think that would be a good opportunity for us to discuss that. But in the meantime, we are enforcing Section 106-89 of the City Code. So I just want to make people aware of that.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. All right. Just want to, again, reiterate and thank you to Gadsden State Community College for being here today. And thank you for what you do for our community. I'm talking with a lot of people, and I guess probably young people. Of course, most everybody's young to me. But I am encouraging everyone to go to the Gadsden State website and to look up workforce development. There are so many opportunities to improve yourself, and most of the time, it's not going to cost you any money. There's so many opportunities for men and women to better themselves in life by going to Gadsden State Community College, getting a certificate, learning a skill, and becoming an employee at a company in this area that is desperately looking for you. There are companies that are looking for people to come and work for them. And if you'll go through Dr. Alan Smith, Dean Smith, at Gadsden State Community College, you will have gainful employment when you get through with that program. You'll have gainful employment while you're in that program. So I strongly encourage mothers and fathers, grandmothers, grandfathers. Encourage your...your young people to do that. And even if you've had a job change, maybe a career interruption for whatever reason, they want to talk to you as well. So there is no age limits. I'm reiterating young people. But it's been...I know Dean Smith agrees. It's for anyone, anyone that wants to better themselves. We have such a wonderful opportunity. It's such a great campus over there with new buildings. Every time I look up, there's a new building, in addition to the Advanced Manufacturing Technology Center. Then the $20, $25 million the city's investing in the Gadsden Sports Park, which is just going to be a fabulous when it's all through, when it's all said and done. Our Special Needs Field, which we're calling the Champions Field, pickleball courts, activities on the...on the river down at what we all know as Dubb Parker Park, down in that area. Y'all, it's just such a new day in Gadsden. It's refreshing to be involved, and I appreciate the mayor's leadership and his team. Mr. Cole said it very adequate that one thing Mayor Ford knows how to do, and that's hire very good people. And he has done an excellent job with his administrative staff. So with all that being said, I wish you all a good day, and thank you for being here. We stand adjourned.